Welcome to tonight's study, pre-study, no, pre-meeting for December, is it the 16th? I haven't seen a calendar for weeks, so I don't know. I just know it's Monday. Any questions on tonight's agenda? We are pulling one item off of consent, but that's in our notes. So any report, Councilor Zadi?
No, ma'am.
Councilor Hall?
No.
Councilor DeMapp?
I attended the CBT board this week. And so just one thing they wanted me to share is Donna, who lives at Coven Village, shared that they found out that they are, she said, 48th in the nation ranked and first in Colorado. So she was very proud of that fact, as well as I think we all should be that we have that here in the city. So she wanted me to pass that along to council and as well as thank you for the funding of their concert. She was very thankful and grateful, as well as the other folks there, she said, to pass that along. That's it.
I attended a Front Range Passenger Rail Board meeting. Nothing exciting to report, so.
Are you guys looking for a new head or?
So the interim director will be Chrissy Bright, who was in the video underneath Andy. It was his last meeting. So yeah, just gonna keep working ahead because they have to get. There was a little consternation over trying to get the IGA completed by the end of the year and not really having the opportunity to, you know, be there fully for that, you know, being able to see everything. All the entities need to approve it, and this was our last meeting. Yeah.
Hey, I just wondered. Oh, it was a busy week last week. The Broomfield Chamber invited me back in the summer, but that's back when I was having health issues. So they, I promised them I'd come in December. So last Tuesday, I was with them for their coffee and just talking about what all's happening there. We also had the Tapin' Dough ribbon cutting, and what a fantastic place. And people have to know, you have to drive to the west and then go north to get to where Perdita is, the Mexican restaurant part. There's two restaurants under one roof, but you have, they have separate entrances. And the Tapin' Dough in the corners has two gondolas that you can sit and eat. I just think it'd be great for proposing or something. You could just see it, you know? Anyway, that was great, great owners, and they're so happy to be in our community. I had Yapper Group on Wednesday night, and they had a person come from Community Reach to talk to them about mental illness and how they help. And they had a lot of questions about students they knew that were either depressed or going, floating from home to home and stuff. So they asked great questions. NADA meeting on Thursday. If you don't know, US 36 is giving morning tickets this month till December 31st. If you have a double line, if you cross it, you're gonna get a ticket for $75. You have to, if you're in the express lane and you start getting the dotted lines, you may then exit. If you're not in the express lane, but you want to get there, once it starts showing up on your side, on the left-hand side, the dots, then dash marks and then you can get over. If you go any other time, you're gonna get a $75 ticket every time. And January 1st, you will be asked to pay that, and you have 10 days, and then it goes to 150. And if you don't pay that, it just keeps going up. So that's the reason they've made so much money up and down the corridor for I-25. But I hadn't heard that, but I've been buried for a month. So I did not know it was on 36, so I'm trying to get the word out so people understand how it works and why you'll get a ticket.
Do they have cameras? I'm just curious how they.
And they move around. So you don't get settled. You just don't cross the line.
Right.
Cross the line and you'll get a ticket.
Why just one month? Why just in December?
Because you're getting warnings. It's the first month that they put it on 36.
Continuous though.
And after that, it'll be there. So you'll get a ticket. My son-in-law confessed that he got a ticket. He didn't know how to, he didn't know all those dashes and everything. And I said, here's the easiest way. So he said, thank you, and he won't get another one.
I love how they're just out of them.
Yeah, some people get five and six tickets on their way because they just keep zigzagging. They're the ones that are causing the accidents. So that's good. But that was my week. You have anything? Counselor Ireland is online. Oh, Counselor Ireland, do you have anything?
I just have a couple of questions about the consent agenda. The first one about the Knox Court property, did we get any other offers on that property? Only the one offer? And how long was it for sale? And did we really need to make concessions on it?
Hi, sure, sure. Heather Kronenberg, Real Estate Development Manager. Thank you, Counselor Ireland, for the question. So for Knox Court, I believe you were asking for how long it was on the market. And sorry, let me just refer to my nose to make sure I'm saying the correct information. So we put it on the market in October 23rd, and we pulled it off the market and listed it as ending November 14th. So it was on the market for about three weeks or so. We had a number of inquiries from folks during that period of time, a lot of questions that were fielded. But ultimately, this was an offer at list price. They did ask for a $12,000 concession, and we negotiated it down to $6,000 as far as the concession. So we felt that it was a very strong offer, again, at least list price. It was the only offer received during that time, and we were able to negotiate on the concession. So it's from, you know, a pre-approved buyer. And again, just felt like it was a very strong offer.
All right, thank you for answering it. The other question's on the elevator for 88th, Sheridan Boulevard. I was under the understanding that the state owed that building. And so why is the city, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, why is the city responsible for the elevator?
Hi, Counselor Ireland, this is Paul Kinnipole, Director of Public Works and Utilities. And it's my understanding that the building is owned by the city. It was just built on the state right-of-way. And so that's been the status of it for some time now.
It's an expensive elevator, but I guess it's needed. Anyway, thank you for your answers.
Did you have anything for us?
I do have some, I do have a report that I will give tonight in the chambers. I do have some late-breaking news. Tomorrow morning, at the Public Safety Center on the second floor of the training room, the police department staff, as well as friends and family, will be wrapping gifts for families in need. This year, the police department is sponsoring twice the children they typically do, and will need all possible volunteers. So a lot of city staff also come and wrap presents. And I raise all of that because Nine News will be doing live feeds throughout the morning from 5:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. In case you see that on the news, that'll be live feeds from our Santa wraps.
But we don't start wrapping until eight. I know.
I guess they're gonna show up early. Well, our police folks arrive earlier than eight, so maybe there will be some pre-coverage. That's what I wanted to highlight, and then I'll have a full report on other matters in the chambers.
Okay.
We are intentional. I've got me somebody might want to stay last week. We usually go somewhere.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of December 16th, 2024. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council Meeting of December 16th, 2024. Thank you for joining us. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendee shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. If you are here to speak during the public comment, please sign up in the lobby. Sign up closes at 7:15. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Hott.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protemner Mella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
Counselor Demont.
I would like to make a motion that we allow Counselor Ireland to participate remotely.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approved remote meeting for Counselor Ireland. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the minutes of December 9th. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2024 city council meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 9th. Any corrections or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant will be given no more than three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth discussion. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we received one email, zero voicemails by the deadline, and they have been, it was transcribed and we posted it to the agenda packet and forward directly to city council. City clerk, would you please call our first person? This first speaker is Tom Lamfo. Welcome.
Hey there. All right. I'm Tom Lamfo. It's good to be back in front of Westminster, and I'm here to lift up Westminster in prayer. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus's name, we invite you here to Westminster to be with us. There is no God greater than you. No man has ever been able to dethrone you. You reign supreme in all you do. We are here to serve you, and we need you in our lives. What a glorious time of year we are in. It would be ideal if we could carry the spirit in our hearts the entire year. There's promise and hope, and we're always hoping for a better tomorrow. Proverbs 16:9 states, "In their hearts humans plan their course, but the Lord establishes their steps." We have great plans for our lives. We see the present; you know the future. Help us plan our future in humility and obedience. Guide our steps; you know what is best for us. Father, this time of year, we're reminded of our faith. We want our faith in you to grow and become stronger, especially if we are going to trust in you to guide our lives. Our faith is dependent upon us. We have control over how our faith develops. Romans 10:17 states, "Thus faith comes from what is heard, and what is heard comes through the word of Christ." The absence of your word in our lives stifles the growth of our faith. Help us to trust enough in your words to seek them out so we can trust in you to guide our lives. You never sleep. You are omnipresent and omniscient. Every detail of our lives is known by you. You are our God, and we are your people. In your precious name we pray. Amen. Y'all have a nice night.
You too, and Merry Christmas. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. Jody. Like to thank you for letting me come up here and speak in front of you and bring a few things to you. One thing I'd like to do is compliment what a great job the city of Westminster does in the recreation department. I've been in several facilities here recently, and they're very impressive. So you do a great job to take care of the community and keep them entertained. So thank you very much on that. That goes for helping the seniors also. Something I would suggest is maybe a better intercom system back here because when you guys are speaking, some of you, I can hear you fine when I'm out here, but then others are muffled. So if we could maybe improve the speaker's system back in the back room, that would be a conference area that would be great for everybody. Thank you very much on that one. And then I was in here, oh, a few weeks back and brought up the graffiti problem. Just to give you an idea of what we've got going on down in Old Town Westminster is right along that railroad track spur area. I went down there and I literally measured it out. There's over 870 feet of graffiti on the fences and the concrete walls and then the buildings. And then like the 70/20 lull building is vacant right now. They love to put graffiti on that, so it's been covered numerous times, but they've already tagged that. The Parks and Rec did go down and remove the graffiti that's down there in Westminster Station Park, so that got taken care of, so that's appreciated. And then, you know, there's a lot of homeless down in that area, especially along the creek down there, down by where Pinker Construction is. In fact, they've even tagged their construction fence and destroyed that. So the only way to fix that, I guess, is just to paint over it or replace it. But anyway, that's what I've got, and Merry Christmas. Appreciate you guys. Good night.
Merry Christmas. The next speaker is John Palmer. Welcome.
Okay, good evening. Just a hot minute on this topic of this sign that you're looking at. That was erected sometime late Friday afternoon. Coincidentally, that's on city property. The sign doesn't mean sign code, and besides the fact it's on city property. Thanks to the help from Allison upstairs, Patty upstairs, John Burke, Eric Gosselberger, and Logan over in Code Enforcement, they've got an open case, they're working it, and I've been told that this will be rectified tomorrow, if not at the latest first thing Wednesday morning. My premise is you let somebody, a for-profit contractor advertise on city property, the next thing you know, we have Co-Capelli's putting up a sign on city property, or we have McDonald's putting up a sign on city property. So I thank the city for acting on this quickly, Jody. Good job. Next, quickly, a couple of things on the agenda tonight. The economic development, really, we're giving away that piece of property for a dollar and all kinds of concessions to go along with it. Where do I sign up to get a piece of downtown Westminster for a dollar with all kinds of concessions? Please tell me that. Next, let's talk about on the consent agenda. Let me back up to Uplands again. We need to see if we can't get a little better job with them cooperating with the community. I think if you went to the Facebook page, you'll see where they've got one of their contractors just blowing dirt and debris out into the middle of 88th instead of pushing it back onto their property, or better yet, having a street sweeper come along and pick it up. We need to get a better job going on that. Okay, back to the consent agenda. Item A, the Knox Court. I know we sold it. We're going to make $133,000. Too bad we've got, what, three quarters of a million dollars involved in that? We're taking a big loss. That just sucks. I wish more people knew about that. Item C, the elevators over at the 8800 shared and the building that the state of Colorado is using for their probation department. That's a big expenditure that the city shouldn't be having to buy it off. I think we need to relook at their lease and how that's worded next time it comes up. And finally, item E, the one and a half million dollars for homeless hotels. What about our veterans? How can we never take care of our veterans, homeless or otherwise? I think they're more important than these homeless people that are getting shelters at 32 degrees when most of our other sister cities in the area are 20-degree standards, but yet we're 32 degrees. Something's not right there. And again, I think that money could be better spent on our veterans and our homeless veterans than just these habitual offenders that are all over this city. And you know what I'm talking about. So thank you very much. Y'all have a good holiday.
Thank you. You too. The next speaker is Lauren Chevitz. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Lauren Chevitz with Volker Development. We are an affordable and workforce housing developer. Tonight, as WEDA, you will be reviewing a purchase and sale agreement for a parcel of land in downtown Westminster to become future affordable senior housing community called Blossom Commons. We've named Blossom Commons as a nod to the cherry and apple orchards of Westminster's past. The proposed community responds directly to your recent housing needs assessment, which includes a specific recommendation to expand senior housing options within the city of Westminster. The report mentions that 82% of the city's 3,000 senior renter households are housing cost burdened, meaning that they're spending 30% or more of their income on rent. Blossom Commons will provide 50 new homes to seniors aged 55 and older, earning between 30% to 80% of the area median income, with affordability restricted long term. We plan to submit an application for low-income housing tax credits to CHAFAA, Colorado Housing and Finance Agency, this upcoming February. If we're successful, we plan to start construction in early 2026 and open our doors in 2027. So I'm here to just thank you for your partnership and your continued support, and also to thank staff for all of their efforts to date. Thanks.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Thank you. That brings us to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief report. Next slide, please. First, I want to talk about tonight's First, I want to talk about tonight's agenda. We have an information-only, we have two, I have two items on information-only. One is an update on short-term rental licensing in the city, and I want to highlight it for those folks who haven't had a chance to read that yet. That represented in the past year a total new increase of revenue to the city of $1.4 million, and that's revenue prior to City Council's direction on this matter that we would not have received. So, and we're receiving positive feedback from the community that that program is working, and we're always welcome to calls when, when folk need to talk to us about a short-term rental in their neighborhood. Next, in the information-only packet, is update on vendor deployments of fiber networks citywide, and I mentioned this last week, and you have more detail now in your packet as to that deployment. As we work through those installations with those private companies, we will be updating on our public website where those areas are, and we'll keep that updated as those firms progress through the city to increase their coverage. Next, on consent agenda, we have six items, one of which has been removed, and that is item 8E, so we'll deal with that separately. And then we do have a second meeting this evening, and that's a Westminster Economic Development Authority meeting, and that will be with respect to Resolution 238 regarding the purchase and sale agreement for a portion of Block C6 in downtown Westminster with Volker Development Incorporated for the Astor Place Affordable Senior Project, also referred to now as Blossom Commons. Next slide, please. By way of city update, I have one slide, and I do want to plug our program, the Snowbusters Program. So volunteers help Westminster residents who need assistance shoveling their walkways and sidewalks during the snowy winter months. Anyone interested can apply and be matched with a resident before December 31st. If you do so by that time, you'll be entered into a raffle for an electric snow shovel valued at $268. A second electric snow shovel will be also raffled off to our current Snowbuster volunteers. So thank you for all of our current Snowbusters, and I know we have some new ones listening tonight, so please do sign up. That is a very important program, particularly for our seniors' population. All volunteers of all ages are welcome, and you can apply by going on our city website. You can find it at westminsterco.gov/volunteerwestminster. Next slide, please. This week, we have two meetings that had been scheduled for this Wednesday, December 18th. Those are both canceled. That's the special permits and license board meeting that was to be at 6 o'clock, and also canceled is a public hearing with the Historic Landmark Board. Those two meetings are not happening this week. Next slide, please. In terms of the next two weeks, Monday, December 23rd, the City Council meeting is not happening, so that makes tonight the last meeting of 2024. So thank you for those participating in our last meeting of this year. Tuesday, December 24th, the Planning Commission meeting will not be happening, that is canceled. And on Wednesday, December 25th, that is Christmas Day, of course, and the city administrative offices are closed. Also canceled that day is the Environmental Advisory Board meeting, and I want to give a plug to our Free Christmas Tree Recycling Program, which opens on that day and will run for a full month all the way through January 25th. So when you want to recycle your Christmas tree, just drop it by City Park Fitness Center in our lower parking lot, and that's at no charge. You can drop that off at any time, and that starts on Christmas Day and runs all the way through to January 25th. The following week, Monday, December 30th, there is no City Council meeting that day either. And on Wednesday, January 1st, I want to make sure people realize that city administrative offices are also closed on January 1st, and we will not also be having, having the special permits and license board meeting that day. Next slide, please. So our next meeting will be on, in this boardroom next door. It's a study session, and that will be on Monday, January 6th. That will start at 6:30. We have one information-only item, and this is in response to questions and direction from City Council. We'll be providing an update on our city's snow removal policies, so very timely, early in our snow season. And we'll also be having three presentations that night. The first will be the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries Vision Plan Update. Next will be two concept plan reviews, the first for West 136 Avenue, the Walmart and the Cellular Monopole. This is an important project for the city, and that will be bringing significant enhancements to the cell phone coverage in that neighborhood. Next will be concept plan review for Northridge at Park Center Senior Housing Project. Next slide, please. That wraps up my presentation for this evening. You can reach me directly, 303-658-2003, or jandrews@westminsterco.gov, or follow the city on any one of our four social media platforms. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions, anyone? Counselor Ireland, anything?
Just to let you know, I'm not voting for the item I took off this consent agenda. I think the 32 degrees is just way too expensive for our taxpayers to pay for homeless people to be housed at 32 degrees. When I went to the Jefferson County meeting or listened to it online, there's this 20 degrees. I don't think it should be any higher than that. It's just too expensive or already higher than we budgeted, and I'm sure it's gonna be higher than that at 30 degrees. So I will be voting no.
Counsel comments? Counselor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank everyone who has come to City Council meetings this entire year. It's been a dream to have this many residents get activated for all the various issues that we've had. So thank you to every single person who's been listening, who's been watching, and who came in to speak and advocate for their issues. I've had my office hours here, 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. every Monday before City Council meetings, so my next one is going to be January 6th, when we have a City Council meeting, which is that evening. So in case anyone wants to come by, that's when the next one will be. And this weekend is my fourth annual OP clause. I don't know if you guys remember this, but every Christmas, I, my daughter and I, my elf, my helper elf, we go around and we door knock random residents and give them gifts. No strings attached, just thank you for being a resident, and I look forward to this every year, and we're gonna do that this weekend. So look forward to that. You might be one of those residents.
Anyone else? Counselor Camellia?
Thank you for the comments this evening, and I just want to say that the notes on graffiti, I feel like we've all taken them into, we've been taking note, and I just want to say that you're heard, and we're continuing to follow up on it, so hopefully we can have it cleaned up soon.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I also wanted to thank everybody this evening, and also wanted to comment on this past year, that we've had a lot of difficult conversations with our community and back-and-forth with stakeholders, and I really appreciate how everybody has engaged with the city and with us. And so I hope to see that continue into the next year, and I think it's made an impact, and we've certainly seen some changes and responses as a result of the community's input, and hopefully that is felt. I did also have a question about the graffiti comment. Given that it's on the right-of-way for the rail, do we, are we able to go in and abate that, or how does that work?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Pro Tem. We can get back to you with the details. I believe we cannot go on to the rail right-of-way and abate, but we do work closely with the rail company to do so. And I know our residents, such as Mr. Fenimore, have been helpful in getting the railway's attention on matters like this, so we will continue to pursue this expedient removal of that graffiti. On any other property in the city, we are very, very responsive, and we do appreciate it when people bring to our attention specific buildings that have been graffitied, because we do get out there right-of-way and get those addressed. I can follow up with more detailed information on the rail right-of-way work.
That would be helpful. Is BNSF responsive at all, or, I don't know? That would be part of my question. Yeah, I know, the cringe. And then hopefully we can continue to work with Uplands to be responsive to the, you know, have the construction crews just be responsive to the community and be aware of their surroundings, and it is a huge project, and they need to have a high level of care when they're, they're planning for their logistics and their cleanup. And then, one final question regarding the investment in Knox Court. What is the total? I don't think we had it summed up in the item. I know, sorry. If you know off the top of your head.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for the question. Heather Cronenberg will be coming up and be able to address the question.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. This is Heather Cronenberg, Real Estate Development Manager. Counselor Pro Tem, the total amount that we have invested in that project is $340,000.
Okay, and then so with the sale, we'll have 133...
Recoup.
Does the remaining lien stay with the property, or is that being, are we writing that off with the sale?
We're writing that off. The lien has now been removed, and we're writing the rest off.
Okay.
Yes. That was just the amount that we could get from the market on the sale.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank everybody for a long year, specifically, aside from the residents, obviously, that allow us to do these jobs and that have engaged this year. Like you've heard, we've done a lot of work, but I think that it would go well to also thank our staff, who's worked really hard through a lot of hard issues, and Jody, for your leadership this year, finishing off what's been a kind of a tense year. So appreciate that, and I appreciate my colleagues' work as well. I know that this is no easy job. Going into my eighth year of this, it's always different challenges that we have. So it's been a good year, and I look forward to 2025 and all the work that we'll get to do there. I did want to share, because I'm gonna plug it before the mayor can, we do have an app from the police department that you can report graffiti, and I really encourage you to do so. Like I've shared with residents before, it's not just about getting it cleaned up, it's also allowing them to look if there's criminal activity around it, because a lot of times criminal graffiti has meaning to it, and our police department takes that seriously, and they catalog it. So additionally, if you don't do apps, you can report graffiti at 303-706-3333. That's another avenue for you to be able to report that graffiti. So, and then I wanted to close, and, you know, as I will celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ as my Savior, I hope that you get to celebrate the holiday season in whichever way you see fit, and that you get good times with your family, especially to our staff. And then I would ask you to remember that these times aren't easy for everybody. Sometimes the holidays are actually hard for folks, especially if they've had loss through the year or just in previous years. And so it's just a good reminder to be kind to each other, because you don't know what other people are going through. So hopefully with that, you have a good holiday and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in 2025.
You did beat me to the app. But the great thing about that police app is it's easy. It GIS's it for you. So if, I usually bring up that app and have it on graffiti, so when I see it, I can just click my phone, it captures it, and when I get to either a red light or get to my destination, I can finish filling it out, and it gets sent to the police department, and they take care of it. But as you said, it's important that they see it, because they take pictures, and it helps them know what's going on in the area. I just want to remind everybody, US 36 now has the cameras, so if you're going in and out of those double white lines, you're gonna get a $75 ticket. The good news is, you have till December 31st to change your ways. Right now, you'll get a warning, but after January 1st, you will get a $75 ticket, and that's for every time you zigzag. And there are people that zigzag in and out of those four or five times on one trip. So they're creating quite an amount of tickets for themselves, and if you don't pay in the first 10 days, it will change from 75 to 150. So they're serious about it, because it's those folks that usually are causing our accidents. Just remember, if it's a double line, you're to think of it as a wall. It is when the dashed lines come up in your lane that you can move over one way or the other. If there's no dashed lanes, pretend it's a brick wall, because that $75 ticket will hit you like a brick wall once you receive one. I too just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, be safe. Driving, flying, whatever you do, remember to wash your hands and keep sickness off of your doorstep, so that you don't come back with COVID, or a bad cold, or whatever. So just be safe, be careful, and I just hope you take time to relax and enjoy family, friends, even if you're going on a cruise alone. Enjoy every second of it, because it is priceless time. That brings us to consent agenda.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through D and F.
Mayor Pro Tem?
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve items 8A through D and item F. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. For staff on Knox Court, I want to dig into that a little bit more, just because I think it's important for folks to understand the investment there, understanding that we, if you look at it just as an investment, we lost money. But my recollection was, a lot of that money was part of the abatement, and that was more of a safety concern. It wasn't necessarily looked at as an investment, so maybe if staff could kind of just recap that, so that folks understand in case they're listening.
Thank you, Counselor Heather Cronenberg, or Eric Otzelberger, actually, who handled most of this on behalf of the city, will come up. And I would affirm your recollection, Counselor. This was a very rare case for the city of intervening and stepping in on behalf of the local neighborhood, where an event overtook the ability of the local neighborhood to respond and address the situation. So this was not an endeavor for the city to invest in real estate and make money. This was actually the opposite. It was, it was really to intervene in a situation where a local neighborhood was overwhelmed and unable to cope with this situation on its own. And Mr. Otzelberger, who handled this file for most of that time through to completion, will be able to give a better sense of the drivers for the city's actions in this regard.
Eric Otzelberger, Acting Parks, Rec, and Libraries Director, but moonlighting as the, I guess, former Community Preservation Manager. I just want to applaud Heather's work and Philippe Brady, our real estate team, and Lindsay Kimball, Sam Everett. They've really carried this forward to hopefully close this chapter in one of the most challenging situations, very unusual situations that the city's faced. As just kind of a thumbnail sketch of how did we get here? At the time of the explosion, Code Enforcement had run point on two judge-ordered civil nuisance abatements, one in 2019, one in 2021, following that second massive nuisance abatement, and we're talking about tons of material, multiple vehicles, you know, Code Enforcement did its best to work with the family. There was a fire following that second abatement. And then, following the explosion, there was a reverse mortgage on the property, and that reverse mortgage holder out of New Jersey had a property manager, they received three bids for the asbestos abatement. Because of the explosion, the state of Colorado considered it a major spill, which, when those three bids came in to the reverse mortgage holder, it was much more than the value of their loan. They released their deed of trust. HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the federal government, they back every reverse mortgage in this country. We inquired for help, they released their deed of trust. So the city was really in a position of being the ultimate backstop in the situation. Unfortunately, the homeowner had no insurance, so with, with council's support, appropriation of $400,000, a vendor was, was engaged who actually beat the pricing of those three other vendors, and basically created a structure around there. It was, it was very labor-intensive, very tedious work, very expensive work. Besides abating the asbestos, also took out the foundation, and, and that the $340,000 was all of that cost that were leaned and special, special assessments placed on that property in order to effectuate the sale, those were all released. But that's, that's essentially how we, we got to where we were at.
Great. Thank you very much for the information. And I think it's important, and I just wanted to get it on the record, and just... And I think it's important, and I just wanted to get it on the record, and just from my perspective, being here at that time, I recall a lot of citizens outcry for us to do something. And I think there was frustration because they weren't sure of some of the wheels that were turning in the background that maybe we knew about. And when it came, basically what the cost was, what it was going to cost to clean that up, council made the right decision in my mind for us to spend that money. If you recall, there was, aside from just the nuisance and the debris, there was also being shared with us from residents, there were rats because of the debris. So it was a perfect storm situation where I think it was money well spent and I appreciate staff's work on it, but I just wanted people to understand why we made that investment. It was more investment to protect the other neighbor's property as well as their health and wellbeing. It was unfortunate situation where there was loss of life, if I remember correctly, with that explosion as well. Just if people were curious what, you know, what that Knox Court actually is, that maybe didn't weren't around for that. So thank you for the reminder of all that.
Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Item 8E1. Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to, I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest will be best served by authorizing the Westminster Homeless Navigators to make agreements with various area hotels for sheltering and bridge housing, authorizing a total annual expenditure of up to $325,000 cumulatively at all hotels without following the formal bidding requirement, even if, if expenditures exceed $50,000 annually at any individual hotel.
Mayor Protam.
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass Item 8E1. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia.
Yeah, thank you. I would just like to say I'm excited about this because this brings us up to the standards that are currently held right now in Adams and Broomfield Counties. And this more humane measure helps reduce the likelihood that our residents are passing away on our city's streets on a cold night. And it also helps ensure individuals are onboarded to our navigator's case files, which helps individuals get the help that they need. And it also reduces the begging and homeless encampments, which is an ask that I've heard from both residents and businesses alike. So I am excited about this. It's the right thing to do and it's not an either/or situation. We have the funds to do it.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's an important topic and I think that we need to dig into it more. This specific topic is the reason I voted against our budget. Not because it's not important, but we are taking, essentially, this is the move where we're moving money that was set aside for a homeless shelter, that we put aside for our partners, in which case, we are now making a future, taking money from a future debt, filling this gap, and then we're going to, we basically increase this gap, meaning that if you want to do the same thing next year, you've created this additional budget measure that we didn't have before. In addition to that, if our neighbors who are doing the homeless facility come and they're ready for us to pay for that, then we're going to have to come up with those funds. So I think that this is an important topic that needs more discussion because the other half of it that I have a problem with is where's the enforcement part? If we're going to increase the, the portion where we're being humane, we also need to have the discussion about enforcement. Recently, the Supreme Court has ruled that what we were working off of before in terms of allowing people to camp in public spaces is not valid according to the Supreme Court. I'm not saying that means that we have to kick everybody off the public space, but I think that it, it does make sense that we have an actual conversation about it. This is a huge amount of money for us to, to shift. I've heard the traverse in terms of us doing the hotel stays. I've heard from business owners near those hotels that they feel that they've seen an increase in problems at their businesses. So I think, you know, there's a lot more work that we need to do in this area and it has to be balanced. So because of that, I'm not going to be supporting this. I've been here through us, coming up with our continuum compassion of care. I'm not sure if I said that right, but the, all the work that we've done around this needs to continue, but I just don't think that this is the right path for the city.
Mayor Protam.
I, Counselor Demont, I completely hear you with, you know, asking, is this the right path? And I would be open to just looking at this in a broader sense of how it relates to enforcement and whether this works over time. I'm, I'm voting for this, for this year, because, you know, I, this is something we haven't tried and we are, you know, trying to see if this helps, especially the, I think the next, the next item as well I'm speaking to. And, you know, I'd like to understand, how does this, you know, does this make an impact? And I'm hoping that with this, the work that we're doing here, that we can actually have some measures and understand, okay, how many people did we help? Was this impactful? So that we can be more informed going into those conversations and then our budget for next year.
Counselor Carmelia.
I want to say that I agree with Counselor Demont, that this requires a balance, and I also agree with Mayor Protam, that I'm hoping we can find ways to measure for the future year going forward as to how these costs accrued versus costs in the past. And I say that because when we talk about accountability, we have to remember that we're simply shifting the costs from one area to another because our county jails and the court processes also have costs associated with them. So at this point, we are taking a more preventative course, and I'm hoping that maybe we have a way to take a look at what those costs, one versus another, look like in the future. And either way, I think this is something that we should try for a year and see how it goes.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree partially with most of my colleagues. But to be clear, the Supreme Court decision said that the cruel and unusual punishment clause of the Eighth Amendment doesn't stop a city from punishing or prohibiting homeless people in public spaces. That's, that's not the same as saying that it's invalid for them to do so. It just says that it's up to the city to decide what they want to do. And what we did as a city in Westminster was say that gone are the days where we can, where we think government can only do one thing at a time. I got into council because there was a lot of that thinking going on in previous councils of we can only do one thing at a time. I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. And what we did with homelessness was we said, no, this is a modern age, we are a modern city, we need to do right by all our, by all our residents, and we can be preventative and enforce at the same time. And I've been the one here asking, let's figure out enforcement, let's figure out the other side of that coin. And we will. But that doesn't mean that we can't also figure out the preventative. And that's what we did. We're doing both and we can do both and there's nothing wrong with that. And we should all be okay with that.
Mayor Protam.
Just one more thing. One of the distinguishing factors, you know, when we compare ourselves to counties, is that counties actually get money for social services and we as a city don't. And so that's unfortunate because then we're not as well-equipped to respond and well-funded enough to respond. And so we're having to pull money from other things that we'd be typically spending money on, whether it's streets or what have you. So that's why it's painful for everybody. I don't think any of us want to be, I think we'd all love to have some additional money coming into, you know, whether it's from the state or wherever, to be able to address, specifically address our, our issues with people who are experiencing homelessness. So one additional thing that, in addition to measures, it would be really nice to, in the next year or as we approach budget, maybe in the next six months or so, also have conversations with our, our county counterparts and just, you know, we have these amorphous things that are out there, like the, the shelter or what have you that may or may not go into Jefferson County or, we'd just like to understand what are they doing? Because we're doing a lot and we'd like to see some partnership and possibly some matching funding or something like that.
Mayor, Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify and make an invitation to go back and listen to my comments because what I said was, I didn't say that that means that we should stop doing what we're doing, saying I would like to have a wider discussion about it before we spend a million dollars on it. The other thing that, you know, I'll just go ahead and disagree with, I haven't been on a council in seven years and I've been a member of this council with a lot of different people have come and went. And there's not been a time we've done just one thing. We've done a variety of things and councils prior to that, I imagine, did as well. Up to our homeless situation, we've been doing, that's what the whole continuum care is. That is a gamut of different tools that is trying to hit an issue that I don't think we have hit every facet of because it's such a complicated issue. When you talk about homelessness, I don't think a lot of people realize that government looks at homelessness in so many different ways. There are the shelter resistance, the folks that are actually living out in the open space. There are folks that are couch surfing, that are considered homeless. There are people who are living in their cars. It's a very complex situation and I don't think in any of my time has any of the councils, even the one prior to me being elected, was looking at that as a single solution issue. So I just want that to be said because I think that's unfair to the work that staff and councils have done since I've been involved.
Counselor Ireland, anything else?
No, thanks for all your comments. I think there should be a further discussion on this because that's a lot of money to be spending. And it, it's, and I have seen it affect businesses having homeless people in hotels next to them. So that's a concern I have is crime also, and those that are law-abiding, doing the right thing are paying for all this. So I will be voting no. And in the future, I hope we can have a better conversation about the money we're spending on this. Thanks.
Roll call, please. Counselor Demont.
No.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
No.
Mayor Protam Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
And Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 4-3 vote. That brings us to Item 8E2. Counselor Azadi.
Based on, I, I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest will be best served by authorizing the Westminster Homeless Navigators to make agreements with various area hotels for cold weather sheltering, authorizing a total annual expenditure of up to $790,000 cumulatively at all hotels without following the formal bidding requirement, even if expenditures exceed $50,000 annually at any individual hotel.
Mayor Protam.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Item 8E2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Ha.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
No.
Counselor, or Mayor Protam Nermella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
No.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
And Counselor Demont.
No.
The motion passes on a 4-3 vote. It is 7:48 and the city council meeting is adjourned. We will now reconvene as the WEDA board, incorporating the roll call from our past meeting and is there a motion for minutes of December 9th? Counselor Demont, or Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2024 meeting as presented.
Board Member, oh, Vice Chair Nermella. It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of December 9th, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That brings us to Resolution A, Resolution under New Business A, Resolution Number 238. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt Resolution Number 238, approving the purchase and sale agreement to sell portion of block C6 in downtown Westminster with Volker Development, Inc., for the Astor Place Affordable Senior Project.
Vice Chair Nermella.
Second.
It's been moved in second to pass Resolution Number 238. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Protam.
I just want to, oh.
Vice Chair.
I don't even phrase me. I just want to thank staff and the development team for working with us to address an issue that we have throughout the city. I think the public comment earlier this evening regarding just how many of our seniors are overwhelmed by the cost of housing and this will start to make a dent and I'm just, you know, in a, in a place that's walkable and that's just so important. A lot of people don't drive as you get older and so I'm just excited by this. I think it's a, a very reasonable deal with the, the developer. You know, yes, we are riding down the cost of the land, but I think that that is pretty in line with what of the other projects that we've seen in the downtown at the very beginning that were affordable and also some of our other affordable projects and we know how difficult they are to get over the line. I sure hope that as you're applying for tax credits, is it 9% or 4% that we're doing? Nine? Okay. Let us sign letters and we'll do whatever to support that going through. So thanks again.
Board Member Azadi.
Just wanted to say thank you to Volker for bringing this on and I love the name. Was it, what bloom was it? Blossom columns? Beautiful name.
Board Member Demont.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to call out a couple of things on this. One, we heard from the speaker earlier about the housing assessment, which showed that we do need this kind of stock and we probably need stock in all the different varieties and income levels for senior housing. We're not alone in that. The state of Colorado is going to have the, what they phrase Long &amp; Co. as the Silver Tsunami and it's here. And, you know, I did, I was a board member for the Senior Resource Center before being on council and allowing people to age in place was what they were focused on. One of the things for Westminster is allowing people to stay in the city and be able to afford it. Just our last meeting, we looked at the results of our citizen survey and one of the things that struck me was how few people thought this was a good place to retire. Those are our residents saying this isn't a place that they are thinking they're going to be able to retire. So I'm glad to have this stock added to the city and I appreciate you bringing this forward. So I look forward to voting yes on this.
Board Member Carmelia.
Thank you. I want to say that if there is one resounding message I have heard from just about every group that I've talked to, it's that we need more affordable senior housing. And as my fellow board members have just about all stated here, this is something that it will put a dent in the need and the need continues to be there. So thank you for the work here and I'm excited to approve it.
Counselor Ireland, I know I can't see your hand or microphone, but do you have anything to add?
I have thought long and hard about this. I do think housing is needed for this, but the $350,000 for the land, I can stomach because that's how they get their, their grant, but the rest of it is too open-ended for me. They don't even know how much we're going to have to fork over for landscaping or, or the road, so I will be voting no.
Roll call, please. Board Member Carmelia.
Yes.
Board Member Demont.
Yes.
Board Member Azadi.
Yes.
Board Member Ha.
Yes.
Chairperson McNally.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nermella.
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland.
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. It is now 7:53 and the WEDA meeting is adjourned and I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and safe travels and see you back in January. Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and safe travels and see you back in January.